... And one wishing to address the board this evening, if you please fill out a green sheet and pass it to Ms. Williams. So we have it for the records. Ms. Washington?
Certainly. Ms. Remark?
Here.
Mr. Hoitsner?
Here.
Mr. Hurt?
Here.
Ms. LaSage?
Here.
Ms. Benjamin?
Here.
Mr. Moore?
Here.
Mr. Fishback?
Here.
Ms. Washington?
Here.
Mr. McGinnis?
Here.
Mr. Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you. First, we'll have the approval of the minutes from October 27th. Has everyone had a chance to look through to see if there are any changes?
Several were called in grammatical. I'm so moved with those changes.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Pass. First item will be continued items. Ms. Washington?
North Ridgewood overlay area rezoning. North Ridgewood overlay area, DEV 2011-038. Now, are we going to do these individually?
No, we're going to do these together, A and B together. I believe is the way they would like to do it because the explanations are the same for both of them, and then we'll vote on them separately.
Okay. And also, land development code text amendment, DEV 2011-034.
Thank you. Have we heard from staff?
Thank you. Dennis Mrazek, planner with the City of Daytona Beach. I just wanted to make sure I understood correctly. We're going to go through both items, A and B at the one right after the other, and then we'll come back and discuss them. Okay, good. Same page. Okay, this is an item that's been, it's back before you for the third time. First time we had some suggestions. We've, we reworked the proposal. We came back, unfortunately, we didn't have all of the data that maybe we were hoping for to be able to create something that we were comfortable with. So staff went back, looked at additional data, and now we've come back with a modified proposal, very similar to what was the first proposal that we brought back to you. Okay. Just a reminder, this, the first item, 4A, staff is requesting to establish a North Ridgewood overlay classification to reduce possible negative impacts to the North Ridgewood area that may result from changes in the surrounding redevelopment areas, including restrictions of uses that may be located or relocated to the area as a result of the redevelopment area restrictions. As you recall, it was the restrictions that were done in the redevelopment areas that gave concern that perhaps some of these uses would be moving off into a different part of the city. And... This one? The arrow?
Bless you.
Hang on one second, please.
All right.
Staff actions. Once again, staff was developing these regulations for certain uses based on city commission reactions and some workshops that we've had. We did take a look at the redevelopment areas, and that was one of our first steps that we took a look at. That was adopted in August of 2001, just recently. The next, the next step for us would be to look at the...
2011.
2011, yeah. The next step would have been the North Ridgewood overlay area, which is what we're working on right now. And then the third leg of this is perhaps looking at citywide restrictions to certain uses, and that's, we'll have a discussion on that a little bit later on today, but that'll be the third leg of our tasks given to us by the city commission. As far as the proposed North Ridge overlay classification, we've taken a look at it before. This is an area north of the city. It's defined over there in the blue area. Up to the north of it is Holly Hill, borders Daytona Beach city limits. Out to the, to the east, the Blue Road, Blue Road redevelopment area. Along the south, you have the downtown redevelopment area and then part of the midtown redevelopment area. And then the area on the west is primarily bordered by a single-family zoning district. And I should point out, this application does define the area that would allow for the additional regulations to be going into that North Ridgewood overlay area. So as the, as far as the recommendation, staff does recommend approval of the rezoning request. Item would be tentatively scheduled to be heard by the city commission for first reading on January 4th, 2012, at a public hearing, and second reading on January 18th, 2012, also at a public hearing. To vote on this, there's an affirmative vote of six by the planning board shall be required to recommend approval to the city commission. And as we were saying, these would be, this next item are the regulations that would be used for the proposed North Ridgewood area that will be included here in item 4B. This is a staff request to establish a North Ridgewood overlay classification in a defined area, establishing regulations for the North Ridgewood area with restrictions to specific uses within the designated overlay area. Again, the area is, we've defined it with the rezoning request. At the direction of the city commission, staff has researched ways to reduce current negative impacts to the North Ridgewood area, and researched possible impacts that may result from changes to the redevelopment area allowable uses. Some of the proposed text changes, I believe you can find these on attachment C of the planning board packet that was passed out to you. We show the purpose of the, of the North Ridgewood overlay area. We also show the classification establishment, the, this is what would establish the classification for the North Ridgewood overlay area. The, one of the questions that we had when we were here three months ago is, we were looking at the data analysis, and we were missing on some of the information, and we grateful to have an opportunity to go back and collect additional data to be able to come back with a more complete analysis of the area and what we were looking at as far as a few different criteria. One of the things that we had looked at were population, and this was something that we'd brought to you before. The, we took a look at the 2010 census data. The area is composed of 34, what they call census blocks. When we take a look at the entire area, the entire area for all of the blocks decreased by 20 people from 1589 to 1569. There was one block that increased 244 people, going from 3 to 247. It's a bit of an anomaly, that large of an increase. So if you were to remove that, that one block, not use that data, and you just look at the remaining 33 blocks, we would have seen a population decrease of 17 percent for that North Ridgewood area. Over the same time, citywide population had decreased 5 percent. A couple of other things that we looked at were the property values. We were only able, at the time, I believe, to have property values that were citywide, and we weren't able to compare it to what was being done in the North Ridgewood area. We did acquire a good set of property values from the Volusia County Property Appraiser from 2003 to 2010. Citywide in 2003, there was a total of $3.4 billion in value of property value citywide. That number peaked in 2008 at $7.2 billion, an increase of 53 percent from that 2003 number. By 2010, the citywide property value had decreased to $5.5 billion, or a 24 percent decrease off of that peak in 2008. When we compare that to the North Ridgewood area, the 2003 number showed a property value, a combined property value of $21.1 million. In that area, the value peaked in 2007 to $41.8 million, a 50 percent increase, very similar to the increase that would have been seen over at the citywide at the time, only a 3 percent difference, but still very close. But since then, when we take a look at the 2010 numbers, we do show a, an overall property value of $24.4 million, which is a 42 percent decrease from the peak, a substantial difference from the, from the decrease that we would have seen citywide. One of the other areas that we had looked at, and we had brought this to you before, was the saturation of uses. These were numbers that were provided through United Way. We know that it's not a complete set of numbers, and it was a, it was a good apples-to-apples comparison that we would have with other communities, and to be able to take a look at how we would compare with, with not only local municipalities, but also counties. You see the numbers that we have listed here, the proposed North Ridgewood overlay area, we had listed 12. We did do a field study. We believe we've identified possibly three more uses that would fit into that category, raising the number. One of our goals would be to try identify all of the social service uses that were in the area, so we can have a more complete number. One of the things we did, one of our planners did do a field study, walked the entire North Ridgewood area, identified the properties, whether they were single-family, social service, residential, vacant, and went ahead and marked it up on our, on our map. Useful now, might be more useful in the future, as we look to, to look at the different uses along the North Ridgewood area, as some perhaps commercial uses. One of the other things that we looked at that was kind of interesting, we wanted to take a look at homeownership, and what kind of percentage of homeownership we may be seeing in the, in the North Ridgewood area. Took a look at the total number of citywide single-family units. We found just over 15,000 listed citywide in the North Ridgewood area. We've found 310 listed as single-family units. Just to point out, it is generally a multi-family zoning districts, but we do have single-family units up in that area. Those properties that are receiving a homestead exemption, 9,500 citywide, or 62 percent of all of the single-family units. In the North Ridgewood overlay area, we have 105, or 34 percent. When you take a look at the non-homestead numbers, you see that the percentage of non-homestead citywide is 38 percent, non-homestead in the North Ridgewood area is 66 percent, indicating a higher number of rental units, perhaps not owner occupied in this particular area. We did provide a map also of all of the, the single families that we have found listed in that area. Now, when we had, when we come back to, when we came back to you the first time, we were looking at a list of prohibited uses. This is a list very similar to what the city commission had approved for the redevelopment areas. Based on the information that we've, we've been able to, to collect, the additional information, staff is comfortable with moving forward with, we had talked about a conditional use for some certain uses, but based on the information that we've had, staff is comfortable taking this list and doing something very comparable to what happened in the redevelopment areas, and having them all listed as prohibited uses in the North, in the North Ridgewood overlay area. One of the things, though, that we wanted to take a look at, and one of the programs that we instituted in the redevelopment areas was the grandfathering of the legal non-conforming uses. One of our goals was to identify all of the different type of uses that were currently existing up in the North Ridgewood overlay area. One of the, one of our tools that we used, we had sent out applications to as many facilities that we had a record of, that we're able to acquire addresses from. We've done some, put some information on our website, so that any, any one of these particular type of uses can identify with the city, that they are a legal non-conforming use to remain a legal non-conforming use, even when these regulations went into place. General prohibitions. This is, this was going to be one of our categories over here. We're looking at the following primary accessory uses to be found, primary and accessory uses found to be detrimental in the, to the economic stability of the North Ridgewood area. Just recently, as I was going through the proposed text amendment, at the 11th hour at the, at the city commission meeting on social services, one of the things that we identified was, there are several of the, of the lists, the uses that are on the prohibited list, that would be an accessory use to a building. That's significant because the land development code says, if it's an accessory use to a permitted use, regardless of whether they were legal non-conforming or not, they would all become illegal non-conforming, and the accessory uses would have to, have to go away. So what we did with the social service uses in redevelopment areas, we separated some of the uses out that were more technically, could be used as the accessory uses, and we put them into a different category. Still prohibited in all redevelopment areas, but we added additional language that would protect them if they were an accessory use, and allow them to be grandfathered in. It doesn't allow new uses to come in, it only takes the uses that are currently legal non-conforming, whether they are principal uses or accessory uses, and allows them to continue as long as they, as long as they continue based on what the land development code would requirement, require them to do. And this is, this is new, this isn't in your information. As a matter of fact, I think we've, we've passed out in your packet.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I think it's page two has, has the regulations that were put in place for the, for the redevelopment areas, and how we kind of took a look at being able to protect some of those uses that, that were accessory. And we've got the, the list. I kind of have it up here. A little hard to see, but typically it would be the community residential home, similar facilities, congregate meal facilities, food pantries and feeding programs, homeless services, homeless shelters, and recovery home and treatment facilities. If this is a legal, non-conforming accessory use, it would be allowed to continue provided that they identified to the city that, that they are there, and that they are existing, and that they are legal. As for a recommendation, staff does recommend approval of this amendment request. The item is tentatively scheduled to be heard by the city commission for the first reading on January 4th, 2012, which is a public hearing, also for a second reading on January 18th, 2012, which is also a public hearing. An affirmative vote of six by the planning board shall be required to recommend approval to the city commission. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you. It was very thorough. Since we're going to vote on these separately, let's, let's take them going to A, which would be the overview, overlay first. Does the board have any questions of staff regarding item A at this time? No questions? We have a speaker, Mr. Michael Woods, 4A.
Hello, and good evening, everyone. For the record, Michael Woods with the law firm Cobb &amp; Cole, 351 East New York Avenue in our Deland office, here tonight on behalf of the Volusia Flagler Coalition for the homeless. You heard me back in August, and this is mainly just to preserve the record again for you, just to clarify that the existence of the North Street facility, the homeless shelter on North Street, is through a semi-public use permit. So what, in effect, happens with this ordinance, with the changes in the ordinance is proposed, is that we'll essentially kind of create a fencing in. We'll be able to expand no farther, because the uses will be prohibited off our property, but the changes here do not make us a non-conforming or an illegal use, because the nature of the semi-public use is different from traditional zoning. We talked about this at the, at the last hearing, but I thought it, and I'll appear before the city commission as well, just to make sure everyone's clear that, not so much now, but three years, five years, eight years down the road, we don't want there to be any confusion as to whether or not, or how this ordinance is meant to apply to our property. So, just want to put that on the record. Thank you so much.
Okay. Mr. Newman, I don't know if it was A or B that you wanted to speak on, this is simply A right now, the overlay.
I wasn't sure either which one. They're kind of both interconnected. I want to say that I am for having this overlay in for the protections that we need, being funneled in between the two CRA's, and I'd like to see the same protections that the CRA's have. These are a lot of residential areas. I'm in a strictly residential section of Mulberry Street. Oh, I'm Jamie Newman at 535 Mulberry Street, by the way. And as I said, I'm, I'm for the Ridgewood overlay. I'm a little concerned about the accessory uses, because it looks a lot like the conditional uses did before. And one of the problems there is that concentration of social services that brings a lot of vagrants and derelicts into our neighborhood who, you know, use the services to enable their lifestyle. I'm, I'm not against helping the homeless, but it's kind of backfiring on us, as I'm sure you're all aware. So I just wanted to bring up those points, and hope that we do get this overlay, and that it gives us the protections that we're hoping for. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Newman. We're back to the board. Hold on.
You have.
Is that on A, or? 4A? Oh, okay. All right. I'm sure. Back to the board. Board, ready for your comments on the overlay? This is on A.
Motion to rezone North Ridgewood overlay area, DEV 2001-038.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Now we'll go to item B, and we have, Mr. Woods, I don't know if you want to speak again or not, or do you...
If the court would just recognize the same comments, that would fine.
Fine. Patricia Hurd, on item number B.
My name is Patricia Hurd, 822 Vernon Street, Daytona Beach, Florida. I'm here to ask you to consider the midtown request to approve Development 2011-094, and I would like to speak to that for a few minutes.
Wrong item.
That's...
Okay, that, well, you, I said B.
Well, this is A and B, and you just had...
Of North Ridgewood.
Okay, well, just keep it for...
We'll, we'll call you again.
Thank you.
All right, there are no other speakers.
Yes, you had a, didn't you have one?
No.
Oh, okay. Okay.
They have all spoken. So we're back to...
I do just have two quick questions. If this item B, if these are prohibited, this means they're prohibited across the board. They cannot come in under a special use, a public use, a semi-public use, any kind of use, period.
I think they can apply under like the public use permit process? I think that's, did we talk about that on the redevelopment area one?
If it were listed as a prohibited use, would it be allowed to come in?
And they came forward as a public use. Did we talk about that?
I don't think that they resolved it if they did talk about it, what the answer to that question was.
Yeah. They may be able to get it through the public use process.
Is there a way to prohibit that? Or is that still, when it says not resolved, is this not resolved between legal and planning and whomever, or...
I'm not sure that, I don't remember this coming up. Do you?
No.
No. Okay. So it may be something we hadn't thought of yet.
Okay. Because I, I think it might be a moot point to do this if you can still leave the door open under these other uses, and I, I'm just assuming that prohibited is prohibited is prohibited. So if it's, if it's not, I think that somehow needs to be taken into account in what we're doing here.
I think that, you know, if that's your desire, it'd be perfectly acceptable to put this part of your motion, and we will research how to...
Okay. Because I think you've made the case.
Legally tackle that, but...
Yeah.
I'm not sure we're prepared to answer the question.
Okay. All right. Okay. Because, yeah, I think it's a very strong case, and to allow any of these uses in any way is just going to be a further detriment to this area, especially showing that, you know, it, it started actually losing value while the rest of the city is peaking. I mean, this was having an effect. And then my other question, would a motion to approve, even though we, you gave us the staff handout that included the accessory use information language and the identification language? So would a motion to approve, since that's part of the recommendation, we don't have to specifically say those, it's, because it's staff recommendation, that would be part of this motion?
I don't believe it was a part of the staff report, so if you could include in your motion, that includes the accessory uses.
Okay.
And that came, anyone else? That came up late because of thought...
In the, as we went through the redevelopment areas, it was, it came up late in, in that process, because we started taking a look at some of the uses that were going to be prohibited, and we had some, some legal accessory uses that were operating. And the way, the way the land development code was written is, because they weren't a principal use and they were an accessory use, the determination was made, we wanted to be able to protect those legal accessory uses also, and this was going to be the only avenue to do, to do that. Why we didn't get them included into this particular package, I have to be honest with you, I, I went back and I took a look at this again, how we did it before. We were kind of in a state of flux as we were going through this process, and, and I recently took a look at that and thought, this is a, this is, was really a great idea for us to be able to do this, to save some of these accessory uses that were, that were legally conforming, and we really need to be able to use that in the North Ridgewood area also.
I hear you say there are three of them.
There's, I think, five, there are five types of uses that we had moved over into that B category, or that two category, that if they were an accessory use, and they were a legal accessory use, they'd be allowed to continue. It doesn't mean that they could come in and be an accessory use, that would be prohibited. It's only if they were currently existing as an accessory use that they'd be allowed to, to be permitted to stay, if they can prove that through the, our program.
I think also in addition to what Dennis indicated is, the reason this didn't come up initially in our review of this is kind of one of the concerns we've had about the land development code, the regulations are kind of scattered. This came out of Article I, which wasn't related to the other areas we were digging into, and we identified it, and wanted to make sure it was covered as well. And they had to have special wording, and we had to actually split the uses into two different categories to account for that, and that was an Article I change as opposed to a lot of the other stuff.
Does the chairman? I have one comment. I had called Dennis earlier today to ask about the classification of the Central Baptist Church as a social service use. I just happened to notice on the map, it was, I thought, that's church. Does this, the discussion we've been having about the accessory uses?
Well, in this case, an accessory...
Is it with this?
Yeah. In this case, it is an accessory use that is attached to the church, and, and I believe, for all intents, it's a, it's a legal accessory use. This is a perfect example where, without this, doing the separation and allowing an accessory that's legal and conforming to be able to, to stay, they would have to leave, they would have to leave and not be in that area anymore. They, they would have to be taken out of that area. They, I don't, I don't know how, what the timeframe is, but within six months, they would have to vacate the property.
Are you by any chance talking about the manor? There, the, the senior assisted...
It's a...
Subsidized living, or...
No, this is on, this is 142 Fairview.
Yeah, no, I know, but the manor is part of Central Baptist.
It does have the manor as listed as a social service use.
Yeah, that's what I was wondering. That's why I was, and that's an accessory use to the church, so, yeah, that's what I was wondering. Okay.
So the same...
So the same requirements for the, restrictions for the accessory uses would apply in this, this particular situation?
They have to move in six months.
To all the social service uses attached to the church?
Yes.
Okay.
Have any other comments?
Motion to pass Land Development Code text amendment, DEV 2011-034, including the language for the identification program and protection of legal accessory uses, and including the legal research for further prohibition of these prohibited uses coming in as either public, semi-public, or any other category that might be devised.
Second.
I think that covers the room.
That should cover.
Thank you.
We have a second, we have a first and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The, instead of going to the next, under new items, where we have a discussion citywide on large scale, let's go, since we have people here that may be wanting to speak on the sixth item, if you would cover that, Ms. Washington.
Land Development Code text amendment, prohibition of convenience stores in Midtown redevelopment area, DEV 2011-094.
Thank you. Would you hear from Mr. Bryant?
Good afternoon, board. My name is Charles Bryant. I'm redevelopment project manager and liaison for the Midtown redevelopment area. Tonight, I'm here to present to the board item number six, LDC text amendment, prohibition of convenience stores, Midtown redevelopment area, DEV 2011-094. Article 12, Section 2.2, uses specifically prohibited. Item B, specific prohibitions within individual redevelopment areas. In addition to the uses listed above, there are certain uses which are in conflict with the redevelopment goals for certain areas. The following uses shall be prohibited, prohibited in areas specified, regardless of whether such uses are generally or customary included in a general use category as permitted or conditionally used within the applicable zoning district use schedule. Number two states, Midtown redevelopment area prohibited uses, convenience stores with light vehicular service has been struck through. The current LDC definition for a convenience store is a retail sales and service store with less than 5,000 square feet of floor area that primarily sells grocery or daily items and miscellaneous day-to-day goods. I think you do have a copy of the map, which outlines the redevelopment, the convenience stores that are listed in the redevelopment area. They are broken down. Dr. Martin Luther King Boulevard, there's eight from Dr. Martin Luther King Boulevard to Bellevue Avenue. They're listed as 115 South Dr. Martin Luther King Boulevard, 240 South Dr. Martin Luther King Boulevard, 243 South Dr. Martin Luther King Boulevard, 301 South Dr. Martin Luther King Boulevard, 518 South Dr. Martin Luther King Boulevard, 601 South Dr. Martin Luther King Boulevard, one that's recently received approval, 719 South Dr. Martin Luther King Boulevard, and 580 Bellevue Avenue. On Dr. Mary McLeod Bethune Boulevard, there are three. 517 Dr. Mary McLeod Bethune Boulevard, 835 Dr. Mary McLeod Boulevard, and 879 Dr. Mary McLeod Bethune Boulevard. On Orange Avenue, there are three. 709 Orange Avenue, 748 Orange Avenue, 955 Orange Avenue. There's one on South Nova, 133 South Nova Road, and two on International Speedway Boulevard, 600 West International Speedway Boulevard, 971 West International Speedway Boulevard, and the last one on George Ingram Boulevard is 839 George Ingram Boulevard. LDC, Article Four, Section 2.3, the following guidelines serve as guidelines and determine a recommendation. A, has there been a change in conditions since the current zoning designation or regulations were adopted? Have major land uses or conditions changed since the adoption? B, is the, is the amendment compatible with existing development patterns? C, will the amendment adversely affect traffic patterns or congestion? D, will the amendment adversely impact population density or development intensity such that the demand for utilities, transportation facilities, recreational areas and facilities, schools, and other public facilities and services is adversely affected? And E, what effect will the amendment have on the health, safety, and welfare of the neighborhood of the city? Tonight, here we are asking the planning board to, to approve the recommendation from the Midtown Redevelopment Board, which was voted on at last meeting, 502 prohibit convenience stores in the Midtown redevelopment area.
Thank you. Does anyone on the board have a question of staff this time?
I, I do.
No?
I do.
Oh, you do?
Yeah. Were you able to, since we were giving all this police call information in the background, were you able to get a key that tells us what kinds of calls these were? Do we have any idea?
No, I did send a request to, to the police department, Captain Capri. I asked if these were calls that were able to be presented. I didn't know if, if the police department had some kind of secure calls. I asked that question, I sent that forward to him, I didn't get a response from him.
Okay.
I did request a copy, and I have that here, a copy of all the properties actually within the city of Daytona Beach that have been placed on no trespassing. And some of those properties are listed in this document.
Okay. So some of these properties, that was going to be my next one, so some of these are on, but we don't know how they correspond. Do we know if any of these properties, there are three when I went through the addresses that seem to have an inordinate number of calls on them. Do we know if they've ever been taken to the nuisance abatement board?
That I don't have.
Okay. All right. That was, that was it. I just wanted to.
Anyone else? Thank you. We have three speakers, Denise MacMillan.
Good evening. Denise MacMillan, 929 Lemus Avenue, Daytona Beach, Florida. I'm a member of the Midtown Redevelopment Board, and I'd just like to say, as probably the youngest person on that board, being born and raised here in Daytona, going through the public school, attending with the Cookman University, Alamoata, and moving away to Miami, Florida to work in 1988, but coming back to care for my grandmother that raised me. It has appalled me, and it hurts me that in Midtown redevelopment, nothing much has changed. Eventually, roads get paved when there's a fight and enough people complain. Eventually, things come into order, into code. The reason that I am against convenience stores, number one, there's a study being done, and it has been proven that the items that these boards, that these stores offer us, they're not good to our health and the well-being of the people that live in these communities. There have been police raids on stores where these merchants recruit people that are career criminals, that shoplift and steal items, and bring them back to these convenience stores in our area and jack them up. That's public record on police record pool, Fox 35 News for the footage. And then you have people that come before boards and request for convenience stores to be open, and I'm not going to say fib, white lie, whatever, but a lie is a lie. When we ask you questions, and it can be proven, that you tell us you have no interest in other stores, but you're getting ready to open up another store, which would make number seven on Dr. Martin Luther King Boulevard. I'm against them because being a female, I fear walking by a lot of men, but when I'm called out of my name because I refuse to give a panhandler that stand in front of the store asking for money, that's frightful, but then when you go on and tell the merchant, nothing's done. I invite each one of you board members, at some point, all those addresses that Mr. Bryant submitted to you all, just take a ride, and just look what happens outside. And outside of looking what happens outside, go inside these businesses and look at what they offer us. We are not the only consumers of beer and cigarette and alcohol and paraphernalia to use illegal substances. What hurts me is the fact that they go out and they buy merchandise, and it's outdated. You have fruit and vegetables which are overpriced, but they're at the point of being ready to ferment and grow mold to where they should be thrown away, and I, as a person, I don't patronize them. But I had to go into one across from Thompson Funeral Home because I'd gone to a viewing, and I needed some gum. It hurt me to my heart to see a little boy give a merchant a $5 bill, and he gave him back a dollar and some change. And I said, sir, don't do it on my count. The law says the price of an item must be exhibited on the shelf, if not on the item. Let's be fair, how much is the corn? It's 79 cents. I said, but if you check, you'll see that he gave you a five. These are the things that we deal with, because this is what's in our neighborhood. If not, people have to go eight miles to Walmart, eight miles to Windexy, and then another eight miles to a Walmart. What Midtown needs, we have to fight and plead and beg for. And then the city can hire a consultant to determine what downtown needs to be revitalized. I'm wondering what's happening when that main blood vessel from I-95 to A-1A, and this main blood vessel from Nova Road to the bridge of Orange Avenue, which continues to A-1A, what happens when nobody turns off and comes into Midtown? We can't get investors in our area if we don't get the funding and the things that we need in there for it to be vibrant and productive. And as city staff, I, I just find it appalling that this many years, this area has not changed, and it's not changing. It cannot change unless something is put into it for it to become vibrant. Fifty-two convenience stores in Daytona Beach, and on that list, this remark, if you call the police department, they may not even ask you who owns it. You can just give them the address, and they can tell you exactly. And some of these owners are aware of what goes on outside their stores, because they allow these people to do these things. They run inside and make deals, they go inside and buy soda to say, I'm going to patronize him so he can't kick me off his property. But what do you do when every day, it's a known fact, when you get in your car, when you go down this particular street, you can see certain people there from sunup to sundown, or certain times of the day or the evening, it's just a mob there? I'm against it, and I appreciate it if you all support the fact that we want that to be a prohibited use in Midtown. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. We do have an attachment B from a letter from the Public Health Department in our packet too, that substantiates what she was just saying. Norma Bland, is that?
Good evening, Norma Bland.
Keep your comments to around three minutes, I'd appreciate it.
I beg your pardon?
Keep your comments to around three minutes, I'd appreciate it.
I don't think that's fair, since the others did not do that, so my comments, I will try to critique them, however, if they go over, I would like to have the same opportunity to conclude my information. Norma Bland, 1317 Imperial Drive, Daytona Beach, Florida. I'm getting off on the wrong, but I'm going to ask the Lord to guide me tonight. Society gets back when it invests in its community as well as its children. We have basic human rights in this community. I don't live in Midtown, but I grew up in Midtown. I grew up in that area. There is no nutritional value for our children to have another convenience store. Staff dropped a bomb on this one, because legally, you're supposed to have 24 feet turning space, and it's only 20 feet there. I called a news conference the other day, which I believe it was Tuesday or Wednesday. The owner has stated that he will walk away from this deal if he can sell it for what he paid for it. I would like to have the city of Daytona Beach go in and purchase this property, since they're purchasing property all over the city, address the ills of Midtown, and allow those people to live in a safe, habitable environment and raise their children as such. There have been over 50 service calls at 518 South Martin Luther King. Thirty drug-related. We've had some assaults. We've had some attempted robberies. They're the same owners that want to come into 719. So we don't need that. The community does not need that. And would you like to have it in your back door? I'm sure the answer is no. Staff dropped the bomb. You all can make it right. The owner is willing to walk away because if not, he's going to see my face and about 50 others every day he opens his door. And if he's hidden his pocketbook, then he can walk away from this venue. We need fresh fruits and vegetables for our children to grow healthy like your children are growing. We don't need outdated formula. We don't need 50 cent cigarettes sold, beer and wine, because it's already an addicted neighborhood as it is. We don't need illegal drug activity in front of the store because eventually, that's what's going to happen. Even though people have a right to employ who they want to, but going in those establishments, no one looks like me, so why should I buy from them? So I'm asking you tonight to please prohibit the use of anyone coming into the city of Daytona. We cannot go into any other country and set up shop to do what we want to do. So don't let this be a dumping ground. And I hope that the three minutes I've come under.
Thank you.
Good afternoon again. Patricia Hurd, 822 Vernon Street. Yes, I grew up in the neighborhood, and I'm back there. So I know what it is to live on Wells Lane. On Wells Lane, I went down the other day, only one family lives on the street. And I want you to know, between 7 South Street, Wells Lane, and Bellevue Avenue, we, we have one convenience store, 580 Bellevue, and propose to have another one at 719 South Martin Luther King. There are no homes, houses, or anything there. So what is being set up? Nothing but another drop-off for drugs. And this we do not want in our neighborhood. I would be there every day, and I think I do have some influence in the neighborhood to tell the parents not to send their children down to that store. I am the one that you read about, that followed one of the owners from Sabalot one night, all the way out on Thorough Street. He purchased about $300 of goods. He purchased about $300 of goods. And I said, "Where is he going?" I followed him. He was going on the corner, Jenny Anne Drive and Third Street. That's where he went. Also, I was at CBS, Holly Hill Plaza, one Sunday, and there was a family. They wanted to buy all of the milk that was on sale to take it back to their store. We're asking you to look over this again and consider not putting any more convenience stores in our neighborhood. Also, rather to consider not putting any more in that neighborhood. Statistics have been given, so I do not have to go over that anymore. And the question that Donna Kuppel put it very clearly the other night, would you want it in your backyard? Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is John Nicholson.
John Nicholson, 413 North Granville Avenue. I'm going to differ with the previous speakers for a different reason. The question was, would I like it in my backyard? No, but I have it in my backyard. I have as many convenience stores in my neighborhood as they have in theirs. There are more convenience stores on the beachside than there are in Midtown. I, I bring this up for a reason because we are the same size, the same population, different, um, outcomes. Uh, there are, I was surprised, there are seven houses in, uh, beachside that are over a million dollars. They're land-wise, lots of money, lots of opportunities. My little area is, is having a problem, but beachside is not. Their little area is having a problem. I ran a convenience store once years ago in Midtown, right off of Orange Avenue. It was a liquor store, convenience store. I saw the problems firsthand. I sit on a nuisance abatement board. We have not had a meeting in six ye-- I mean, three years. Uh, there were six of the convenience stores that are on this list that came before us. It's a constant problem for the neighborhood. And I'm not saying it because, um, there are too many convenience stores. There is access, if these convenience stores are closed, there is access. There's an Aldi, there's a Save-A-Lot, there's a Pearson's. Food can be obtained there if need be. These convenience stores are not what we would typically see in our neighborhoods. There are a lot of drugs, there's a lot of problems associated with them, so they're-- don't do this because of the numbers. They exist in other neighborhoods in numbers. It's a unique problem, they're having a unique, um, effect on the neighborhoods. Do it because of what it's doing to the neighborhood, not because of the numbers or not because there's not fresh vegetables there. There is, but there is a problem here and it's up to you to solve it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hamus Ivy, the last speaker.
Good evening. Hamus Ivy, 314 South Franklin Street, Vice Chair of Midtown Redevelopment Board. Mr. Chairman, um, board members, I stand up here echoing everything that, everything, everything that people have been saying, the board members and the community. It's time we put a stop to what's going on in our area. And it's up to you to follow up on what we have decided in the community to make our community better, to make it right and continue with the growth that we're trying to do. We're on the verge of change. We've done the things that we need to do. In the history of Midtown, there has never been a master plan that we can sit back and start having rules and regulation on. I'm asking tonight that you go along with what the Midtown Board has decided to do, what the community has decided to do, and support us in the change that we're trying to make. I'm asking you tonight to make a vote to let's stop the humiliation that's going on in our communities. Help us make a change. Help us become part of Daytona Beach, not just Midtown, but a part of our town, Daytona Beach, Florida. Thank you.
Thank you. That was the last speaker. Board, your comments? We have any comments?
I've got loads. You can go ahead.
I have. Go ahead.
I have a question. Yeah, I, I want to know, will our vote tonight affect, um, the, uh, the decision that was made by the, I mean, the, uh, the convenience store that's on, is it 719? It will not, this--
It will not, correct.
It won't? Okay, this is for the future.
Any new applications?
Correct.
So this is just for future--
For future.
Prohibition of the, um, convenience stores?
Correct.
Okay. I have several, um, comments. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I didn't--
Thank you.
Thank you. I didn't realize you were--
Um, I'd like to say first, I've attended the Midtown meetings. I've attended their workshops. I've listened to presentations as it relates to what is being done to change the view of Midtown personally, living in, not living in Midtown, but living in that area. You get the view that it's a dumping ground for the city. What nobody else wants, it, it's approved to go there. As Ms. Hurd stated, where this convenience store is attempting to go, and I hate the word convenience store as it sits, because it's not a convenience for anybody. There are no homes there. There's a convenience store that services just a few feet away. Why do you need two convenience stores so close to one another? Granted, it's been approved. I didn't agree with that, uh, but again, I think to approve any more convenience stores in that area would be a failure. It will go against what the Midtown Board has attempted to do over the past, uh, two years. And I would vote to approve, uh, not having any more convenience stores set up in that area.
Thank you. This is remar.
Um, actually, I'm coming from the point of view, I would like to see this continued to February, which keeps it pending, so nothing else can come in. I think there are some problems with what we have before us and some, um, things that need to be clarified. Um, one of the things that, one of the problems is, we were given a list back in June when this first came forward of prohibited uses, and that was car washes, convenience stores, vehicular service, vehicular sales and rental. Okay? And that was 48 businesses. Um, we have 10 with our backup packet tonight. We have, wait, one, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, 10 addresses that were not on that list, um, three of which are called out tonight as convenience stores, one of which is Pearson's Groceries, which I believe is more than 5,000 square feet, which is not a convenience store. That's, that's a problem there. Um, one of the stores on the list in June, 560 Dr. Mary McLeod Bethune, that was listed as a convenience store, is not in front of us. I think there's a problem with not knowing exactly what's going to be affected, what businesses are going to be affected. I also, um, think there's a problem when I look at some of my backup, some of the addresses in the backup that are used to make the case tonight are the, and these, these are relatively recent, the police, um, and the photos, some of those addresses are car washes, one of them's a vehicular service station, um, so that actually shouldn't be in here to make the case. Um, I'm not saying that there aren't, um, problems with drugs. I mean, we have it in my neighborhood. Walk up and down Riverview anytime you want, you can get it from your car. But, um, I think out of this, we only have three properties that really have an abundance of police calls, and I would like to know exactly what those calls are. I agree with, uh, John, the nuisance abatement board has not been used. It has been used to great effect in other areas. I don't know why it's fallen into abeyance. I called the city clerk's office this afternoon. It's still actually a functioning board, it just hasn't been meeting. Um, I know that the, uh, police chief and Captain Capri were at a recent, uh, Midtown Board meeting, and actually, they were saying that they don't have a problem with many of these properties. So I'm not sure prohibiting all of them is the, the way to go, but even if it is, I'd still like to know which ones exactly we're talking about. Um, the other thing that I did, and you, you mentioned this, Mr. Chairman, the public health report, or the public health from Volusia County Health Department, I actually went and researched this and looked this up, and yes, this information is correct about this. This is from a 44-page report done by Policy Link and the Food Trust, based on 132 studies over 20 years. But interestingly enough, I think that if we go back, if this goes back to staff and there's a way of maybe tweaking this a bit more while keeping it pending, the Grocery Gap report, um, talks about, they go through policy implications, they give major recommendations, they have 24 pages of just references for the types of initiatives that actually help turn convenience stores into viable economic concerns in redevelopment areas from Harlem to New Orleans to south-central LA. None of the policy implications in that report, which is mentioned here, not one of them says make them all legally non-conforming or prohibited. It talks about ways to work with public-private initiative to change what is being offered. Uh, Pennsylvania has done amazing things with convenience stores on a state and municipal level, uh, to make them more like grocery stores. I think there are some really good, um, concepts in all of this, but just like we did with North Ridgewood, I think that there can be something that would work even better for Midtown, um, which would work better for our community if we just had a bit more staff work on this. I don't want to see staff drop the ball on this. I don't want to have something go forward that even the, the data before us doesn't match up with what the proposed text amendment is. And so I would hope that the, the board would actually be, um, willing to continue this, return this to staff, have them work on this a bit more. And like I say, that does keep it pending, which means nothing else that meets the criteria we're talking about. It can't come forward as any kind of use, just like with North Ridgewood, no more social services uses. And I think that we could actually get a better text amendment and something that will not only both protect Midtown, but also, I think, be very positive in some of these areas. So that's, that's where I'm going on it.
Mr. Hurd.
I really, my personal opinion, I wouldn't want to see it continued. I think, um, that we're having, you know, the Midtown Board has hashed this out and hashed this out, and they've had community meetings about it. They don't want any more convenience stores. If it gets to the, the part about more fresh groceries or fresh fruit or whatever that is, that's up to the Midt-- that's, that's up to the Midtown people to not support the ones that are selling out-of-date stuff. If you keep going in there, they're going to stay in business. If the ones move fresh produce or fresh food or whatever you're requesting, if they move them into their stores because they see that no, they're not having any customers, you're changing the face of the convenience stores. You know, it's not the owner. They react to demand. And if there's no demand, there's no business. So I think that, I think that, that they've discussed it enough to where they don't want any more convenience stores and there's enough and for moving forward with it.
I agree. I do not want to, uh, delay this any longer. This has been a subject that's been drawn out, I think, as long as it should be. Uh, and if I'm wrong, correct me, Mr. Bryant, is this not to, at this point, if we approve this, this is not to go in and disband what's there, it's to stop any more being established in that area?
That's correct.
Thank you. That's what I want to be clear. We're not trying to do, we are not. I live in the neighborhood. It is not to do away with what's there, it's not to bring any more onboard. And I think it's just time. I don't think we need to drag it out any longer. Uh, for what? To discuss what? That committee, that board has discussed it, they've hammered it, they're, they belabored it about as long as it should be belabored. I think we need to make a decision so they can move forward.
Okay. Could I ask another question, Ms. Benjamin, since she's been on the board and since you've listened--
Sure.
--to the board? Okay, we're looking at, say, Citco, and I think there was a BP in here. So basically, also what you're saying is, since gas, gas, net, national gas companies now market themselves, you do not have standalone gas stations? So you're also aware as Midtown and part of the discussion was, you're not going to have any more gas stations? Because that will be prohibited as long as they continue to mark themsel-- market themselves this way? And that's part of what we have here?
The Citco that's on the corner of Martin Luther King--
Mm-hmm.
--and International, they sell food in there.
Right, but this is saying you'll have no more gas stations because the gas stations, these national companies now market themselves as gas and convenience stores. So is that part of the discussion? Because this will not just prohibit the convenience store.
Well, from the discussion from the meeting, and they were strictly talking about the convenience stores, like the one on Orange Avenue--
Mm-hmm.
--the one on, several on Martin Luther King--
Right.
--and not so much as the Citco and the BP.
Okay, but this will prohibit them. This will prohibit, this is what we're given, is these addresses.
Any new ones?
Tracy, you really don't have but two or three that's in Midtown. You have some in Zone 6, but it's only the Citco that's up here, that's a, a, a gas station, a real gas station, and you have the BP that's in, I don't know if the BP's in Midtown or in Zone 6.
Mm-hmm.
International is in Zone 6.
Six.
Okay. Now where's the other, uh, service station that's in, uh, well, you only have one in Midtown?
There's in Midtown, I don't think there's a need for one.
Hold on, hold on. Well, I know, but that's Zone 6.
But you won't have enough.
That's Zone 6.
I think if, if that problem arises, that it--
We'll deal with it.
--that it prohibits it, then that will have to be addressed and it would have to be a long issue of them getting permitted and approved. But the, to now, to stop the spread of the convenience--
Convenience stores.
--where it's a brand-new BP that's opening as a convenience store, just by the cause of the actions and the will of the people, they don't, they're saying no, that they, that can't happen. And that's their area and that's their home. So if they have to do, go through a permitting process and jump through hoops and it takes two years to get a permit for a new BP, then so be it.
We have any other comments?
Yeah, I was wondering whether staff has any definition for what a convenience store is when, when the primary product being done there is gasoline.
There's a, a definition for light vehicular service, which includes a facility providing fuel, fueling and minor servicing of self-propelled vehicles. So I think what we see a lot of times is a conjunct-- a combination of convenience stores with light vehicular service.
Would you call it a convenience store not if it were a gas station in which most of its volume, volume, actually, as far as income, income comes from the gasoline side?
Well, it was previously listed as convenience store, comma, light vehicular service. So at this point, a gas station could open, they just couldn't have that store.
So a, a national gas station company that now markets themselves with the store could not open under this?
They could open, but they couldn't have--
No, they could only open as a gas station, a standalone gas station, which they, that's what I'm saying.
And I think that would be--
It's not their marketing anymore, but, uh, so I just wondered if that had been part of the discussion because you don't see a standalone gas station. They don't make all of their money on that. So I, I was just curious, is it, was it part of the discussion?
I'd like to make one final comment. One of the things that, um, I think needs to be made clear is the Midtown Board is attempting to do away with, um, businesses that apply to be one thing and do another. That's where they are. Uh, if a national-- If a national gas company decides to come into Midtown, I think at this point, that's so far-fetched, it wouldn't happen. We've got to do some giant improvements in that area in order for that to happen. First of all, they've got to find the property. So, you've got a lot of things to consider, so if that's going to happen, then I think deal with it at that time, but we need to start. You can't, a baby is not born walking and running. And at this point, Midtown is crawling, and this is one of the items they need to move forward to get to start walking. And I think what they're requesting is not that far-fetched.
I was going to say, as far as gas in the community, normally, my experience and other, I mean, you don't normally think about the crisis of buying gas in your community. In fact, in, in lower-income communities, most of the time, the gas costs more. So, you almost be better off driving outside of the neighborhood to buy gas anyway. Also, I think the convenience store issue is that if people don't have transportation, they're only within walking distance of a convenience store. So, they don't have the privilege of getting into a car and going to Walmart and buying, and buying food that is less expensive. So, I think that's one of the, I think that's critical in this decision, is that, you know, everybody, you know, you go and you pay for overpriced goods at a convenience store because it's the only thing within walking distance. So, I mean, I'm, I think it's clear, not that it's a no-brainer, but I don't see why you wouldn't support prohibiting this, given the fact, given the fact that it's, it's only for future use, and it's not destroying what's already there. So, I'm voting for it.
Any other comments? I think we're ready for a motion.
Motion to continue Land Development Code text amendment prohibition of convenience stores in Midtown redevelopment area, DEV two thousand eleven dash zero nine four to the February two thousand and twelve Planning Board Meeting. Dyes for lack of a second.
There's no seconds, that dies for a second.
I make a motion with approved Land Development Code text amendment prohibition of convenience stores in Midtown redevelopment area development two thousand eleven dash zero nine four.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Now, we go to the last new item, item number five, discussion.
No, I thought you were closing.
Okay, item number five, discussion, citywide large-scale comprehensive plan amendment, social service uses, DEV two thousand eleven dash zero nine one.
Will we hear from Mr. White?
Thank you, good evening. Tom White, our Planning Division. The City Commission asked staff to look at citywide regulations that address social service uses, and one way that we know is important is to address that in our comprehensive plan. So, for a discussion item, we've drafted a goal, objective, and a couple of policies to talk about. The purpose of amending the plan is it documents the city has a disproportionate share of social service uses. We've done the study over the last two years, but to get that referenced in the plan is important for the goals and policies that are put into the plan to support that. Another reason it encourages providers to locate, social service providers to locate in underserved areas in the county. It strengthens recent Land Development Code amendments. When you said that you have the support, sort of the foundation in your plan for those, and it strengthens future decision-making, even with subsequent boards and commissions, so that there's consistency. It doesn't outright prohibit it, prohibit social service uses, but it limits additional uses based on need, and need is what's important in your code that you've already worked on. When there's a demonstrated need, then the public and semi-public use permits could be proposed for, for new uses. So, I can run through, and you have probably read the goals, objectives, and policies that we've prepared for you to discuss. The goal is to encourage equalization of the city's overpopulation of social service providers to underserved areas in the county. The objective is the city shall achieve a comparable percentage of social service providers to population as other areas of the county. And the two policies are as follows, the city shall annually obtain a list of existing social service providers from United Way to compare with other populations in the county to determine whether Daytona Beach has a deficit or a surplus. Only where the, and following's the next policy, only when there's a demonstrated need for the social service providers in the city of Daytona Beach as compared to other areas in the county, the city will consider permitting new social service providers on a case-by-case basis through the public and semi-public use process. I think, you know, one of the reasons the Commission wanted us to look at this, it's similar to why North Ridge, when the redevelopment worked hard to establish some parameters of regulating social service, North Ridgewood was obviously concerned it would creep into their area, and then larger picture, you know, does it bump social service into other parts of the city? And so, this is our attempt, our first attempt, and we want to hear from you what you would like us to address as we're proceeding. It'll probably be a month or two before we really come back with a full package with supporting data, where we have another amendment or two, we want a package with this, completely independent and different subjects, but we want to process it through the same timeframe. So, there's time to do some work. What we propose is to attach a lot of the data that's been prepared, that you've seen in, you know, the notebooks, and even more recent data that Dennis provided in support of the policies. With that, I'll probably just step to the side, and, you know, the board and staff, the three O's, can discuss this. Thank you.
Any questions of staff from the board at this time?
I just have one. The policy four, one, two, at the bottom of our staff report, page one, is the United Way the only way to determine what social service providers are in the area? And if, if they're actually named in that, are we limited to them, or can we go further afield?
I think you're, I got a good point. It's probably, we could, we'd say we would collect lists, including United Way, we're not limited to, and we can expand that language, because no, they're not the only source.
Okay.
Because every agency's not listed, but United.
Yeah, yeah. The Department of Florida, yeah.
Once you have a complete list, then won't you be in charge, because they have to come to the city and defend by us.
Well, actually, the way this will work is right now, if you propose a public use, semi-public use permit, the only criteria in the Land Development Code is need. If you recall, when we had Catholic charities come in, there was a discussion of what was need. Was it for the neighborhood? Was it for an area? Was it for the city? Was it for a two-county area? And there was a lot of discussion. This will kind of identify, we're going to look at the county and see how we compare to the rest of the cities, and if we have a need, we would consider that. If we have much more than our share, we would suggest that they put that location where there's more need than where we are today, anyway.
Personally, I'd like to see this coming along. Any other comments? Should we open the audience to any comments or not?
I'm just going to say, I think at the risk of being, saying the obvious, I don't think it's ever been the role, no, I'm sorry, I don't think it's ever been the goal of the city nor of this board to not supply social services within the community. I think it's only been the problem with the disproportionateness of what's going on around us. And I, actually, I think this is a step in the right direction here, to let some others share. And it's, actually, one time, I would have much preferred to have this west of town and have everybody share with it. That hasn't happened, so we'll just have to do what we have to do.
I was on that page, too.
Another question, actually, with talking about Catholic charities, would this apply to something actually within a church? Or a standalone?
It would only apply for a semi-public use application.
That's all this would apply?
It would, that would be where it would come up most often, is it would come in and as part of your analysis of need, you know, if it's a permitted use, it's a permitted use.
Right, I understand that.
If it's going through a conditional process, like a semi-public use, we would look at this.
Okay. Whether it's in a church or anything else, as long as it's going through those conditional pros.
It's going to have to go through that process.
Okay, okay.
Any other comments on this? Staff, does that give you the information, I guess, on the feeling of the board?
Yes, I think we're bringing this back at a final point. One of the reasons we didn't do that tonight, in order, up until the last round of state regulations, we were limited to do two comprehensive plan amendment cycles per year. That was changed where that's not the case. However, the process to do an amendment still is about the same period of time, about six months. The ads in the paper are tremendously expensive, so we're going to continue to accept applications and process those on twice-a-year basis. We've got a few others that are in our process. We'd like to do all those at one time, so when that is advertised and we bring it far, we'll bring that whole round of amendments, too, with this being finalized the way we discussed tonight.
Good. And we've discussed it several, several, several times. Development Area Board, Ms. Washington?
Let me get my notes together.
All right.
Downtown Blue Road met Tuesday, November first, at twelve P.M. We received a code enforcement report, which included one abandoned building, five buildings with curfew heat, eighteen lot clearances, one that was not in compliance with the maintenance code, one did not have the occupational license, two that had outside storage, and one sign violation. The big item on the agenda was the Williams Square. That's at the corner, to be built at the corner of Palmetto Avenue and Magnolia Avenue. And we, they came to us with the site plan, and they talked, it was a, the building itself is to be developed as a fifteen-unit, single-family residential building, and it was approved. It was approved. Fantastic structure. Fantastic structure once they.
Is the?
The Williams Square.
I know, is the developer, is that Jack White again, or is that?
The, uh, Jack White, Chalison White, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, because they do great stuff.
Right.
Yeah, originally, when it came before us, it was, they had another plan, and then
they went back, revamped it, and I think Kelly's in the back.
Oh.
If we need any further information, I think that's Kelly in the back.
Yes, it is.
But, yeah, it was, it was approved, overwhelmingly approved. Yeah, I think it's going to be a fantastic project.
Good.
Mm-hmm.
Is that it?
That's it.
Midtown Redevelopment Area Board, Ms. Benjamin?
I was asking, I didn't attend.
All right, well, I took care of that real quick. Main Street, South Atlantic, Ms. Remark?
We met Wednesday, November ninth. Actually, we didn't have any action items, it was discussion, but one of the first things that we started with that came out of looking at the Clarion Article Four, there's an area on the river just north of Main Street, the older historic industrial, it's called Industrial Row, all those wonderful homes. And on the future land use map, that's actually riverfront lodging, and it's a really high intensity of use. And we came back after going through Clarion last month and had a conversation, and actually want to see the future land use reflect the actual land use. So, we're going to be looking at returning that to a single-family zoning and preserving that Industrial Row. We also had a discussion on design guidelines, and actually, what was happening in the Surfside historic area being brought forward, because part of that would, since that falls within the Main Street, South A1A redevelopment, it would have to come before us. Pat Drago, not representing the board, but actually showing up as a speaker, she's the Chair of the Historic Board, we had a very good roundtable discussion with her there on where exactly the Historic Board is on making that recommendation. The sticking point seems to be Main Street. To include it in the local historic designation or to deal with it, because it has lost a great number of buildings that actually make it historic. There are really only five significantly historic buildings left, and the discussion at the Historic Board has been, do we treat these as individual properties and work with the owners to get them listed individually as local historic designation, or include them in the overall area? Also, part of the conversation, like I say, was the design guidelines, because when they come forward, they want to have the design guidelines as part of it, and so, those design guidelines, how would they affect new development? So, that was the, a big part of our discussion. And then, we had redevelopment project updates, and of course, our code enforcement, that, and then adjournment.
Okay, that was all?
Adjournment means that was all. That's it.
All right, public comments? Public doesn't want to talk tonight.
Mr. Public?
Staff comments?
I just have one item I wanted to talk about, and I don't know that I have all the information, but the Transportation Planning Organization has started, they've selected a consultant, they started with their US One corridor study. They had actually two meetings where we were in attendance with the consultant. They're talking about setting up a public, they're calling it a public hearing. I haven't heard that defined. It may be more technical, where it's staff they're going to invite in, and it may be before your next meeting, but it may be slightly after your next meeting. When I hear about the date and time of that, to the extent that it is a public hearing and you'd like to participate, I'll let everyone know. It may be just a technical meeting with the traffic consultants that they've hired, but we're trying to make that process be more of a land use study and analysis and help for us than just truly a traffic study. The money's coming out of the Transportation Group, so we're not sure how far we'll be able to go with that. But I think, in any event, it will be good information, it will be helpful information, and we could build on whatever comes out of that. They're certainly interested in working with all of the stakeholders along US One, so when that public hearing happens, I'll let everyone know.
Good. Board member comments? Any at all?
Happy Thanksgiving.
I would like to, our Zone One City Commissioner, glad that you've been making this evening, Mrs. White, and I also would like to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving.
I know, a week from today.